Yeah, so all right. Thanks for having me. As she said, my name is Wes Seko. I'm the Deputy Director of Elections here at the Secretary of State's Office. Been at the state for a little over seven years, worked at a county and worked with school board secretaries in that through this process for 10 years before that. So been around the block a time or two. So hopefully I can give you a little bit of, a little bit of information to help you get started down the right path for getting your names on the ballot.
That's great. We really appreciate you, Wes. And Zach, can you say hello to, to the, to the group again? So I can get it on the recording.
Recording later, and my apologies for repeating myself with people watching live. My name is Zach Goodrich. I'm the Director and Legal Counsel for the Ethics and Campaign Board. Wes will take care of everything on the election side, and then my office will handle everything on the campaign side, which it might seem like they are two sides of the same coin, and in some ways they are, but they are also very different in some ways. I've been with the office for about a year and a half as Director. I worked for it previously back when I was in law school. Before I came to this office as Director, I served as Legal Counsel to the Public Information Board, and very excited to help you guys all out. I always admire people who run for public office for the right reasons. And I think school board candidates, maybe even more than any other office, personify that kind of community service without all the dirtiness of politics that can get involved in some other campaigns. So looking forward to helping all you out, and yeah, I'd say let's get started.
Thank you guys so much. And also with us today is Emily Rhodes from IASB. She's our Board Development Specialist and is helping to run some polls and just to ensure that the webinar runs as smoothly as possible. So Emily, if you want to give a wave, thanks so much for working with us. All right, now we're going to kick things off. So just really briefly, we have six big goals for you today. We're going to talk about some key dates, basics of filing, talking about conflict of interest laws, and discovering three must-know campaign finance laws. We'll explore an ethical scenario and also talk about some cautionary tales. So again, just in case somebody has logged on a little bit late, I'm going to be keeping an eye on the chat feature for today. And so as we're going along, if you have questions for Zach or Wes, go ahead and put them in the chat, and I'll be watching out for those. And I'll try and interject when, when the time is right. So with that being said, let's go ahead and kick it off. Emily, can you start us off with our very first poll? We'd just like to know who's on the webinar today. So Emily's just going to launch a quick poll to learn a little bit about our attendees.
All right, we've got, I've got some people weighing in here. I'll just give it another 30 seconds or so. Okay, I'm going to end the poll now and share out those results.
All right, it looks like we have a nice mix here of current board members, folks who've decided to run, and those who are interested. So that's great. Thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate your time being here. So let's go ahead and get started talking about some key dates. And Wes, I'm going to toss this over to you for a little bit of chat time on this, on some of these key dates and deadlines. Did you want to chat about these?
Sure. So the first very big one there that you can see at the top, September 21st, that is going to be the deadline for getting your nomination papers in. So that's a very big first one to get started. There is a filing window of time that you'll, you'll see. You've got a couple of weeks there. I always encourage folks to turn in their items earlier in the process. There are, for, for some reason, folks that kind of want to keep it close to their vest and everything up until the very last minute and turn it at the deadline. But by being earlier in the process, if there are issues with your nomination papers, that gives you time to get things corrected and filed before the deadline. So you, so you don't kind of paint yourself into a corner. Everybody that's running for school board will be filing with the school board secretary for your school. So if you have questions, certainly reach out to your county auditor. They'll be very helpful and guide you through the filing process and everything. But just be really aware that the school board secretary is the filing officer. So that's where you'd be turning in your nomination papers. Kind of the next date there that comes, the withdraw deadline. Should you file papers and decide that, you know what, after filing, I, I changed my mind and I don't want my name to be on the ballot? You can withdraw those papers, but there is the realistic, real-world case where we have to have the ballots ready to go. So you can't do that after September 26th at 5:00 PM. So that's not a lot of time. It's, the, the law really is set out to be a, if, if you're going to run, you kind of made up that decision before you turned in your papers. But if something should come up after you do that and decide, you know what, I'm going to take them back out, you can do that by submitting or withdrawing in writing to the school board secretary being the filing officer. All school election days are going to be November 7th. Should you be in a community that has a city that holds primary elections? Don't let that throw you for a loop that there might be an election four weeks before November 7th for a city primary in order to narrow down their number of candidates for that November 7th election. But for most of you, most cities don't have primary, don't utilize primary provisions. And so the cities and schools, everybody's going to be on that on November 7th election day. So just be kind of aware of that as well as you're out maybe campaigning, that they maybe talk to some folks for city council as well. And the general public may or may not understand kind of the difference of what's, what's going on there. So you just want to be cognizant of that as well. When we start talking about the, the tier one and tier two canvas of votes, everybody's going to have a canvas of votes that happens on the Monday or Tuesday after the election. That varies from county to county. They're the ones that decide if it's on Monday or Tuesday that they hold that. But that is when they're certifying the, the results for the county. So that'll happen the first Monday or Tuesday after the election. Tier two canvases is when a school district is in more than one county, which I know a lot of the school districts cross over county lines into varying degrees. Some are in even more than just two, maybe it's three or even four counties that your school district touches. The tier two canvas of votes is when the election is going to be finalized for all of those schools that are shared in more than one county. So if I'm running in, in school district on that first Monday or Tuesday, both of my counties are certifying their county results. On the second canvas of votes, that's when the control county is taking all of the votes and adding that together and saying, this is the overall final for the, the school district. So if you happen to be in a school that is in just one county, then that tier one, that 13th or 14th, that's going to be when your election is finalized and done. For everybody else that's in more than one county, it'll be on that second Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday after the election is, is when that's going to be finalized.
Great. Thank you so much, Wes, for that information. And do keep in mind, if you have questions about whether or not your school district boundaries span more than one county, your board secretary is a pretty good resource to ask that question of. All right, we're going to talk a little bit about filing 101 and some conflicts of interest. The very first steps for candidates to, is to learn about filing and understand those potential conflicts of interest that might prevent them from running for their board in the first place. So that's why this is so important to start talking about early on. So Wes, can you share some filing tips for candidates?
Sure. So when everybody that's going to be filing, the number of signatures that are required of you is going to vary based off of your school districts. There's a calculation that happens based off of the number of registered voters in your school district or within your director district. And understanding your school district's makeup, especially for those of you that are already on the, the school board, understanding the makeup of your representation plan is important. There's five different ways that schools can be set up to be elected. Everybody at large, residential requirements within districts, but still voted on by everybody in, in the school district, director districts that are voted on just by the residents of that director district. And so all of that plays a factor in how many signatures do you, do you need? And who's allowed to sign those for you? So making sure you understand any boundaries within your school district is a very important part to get from the school board secretary or your county auditor. They can both assist you with that. There aren't going to be any situations where anybody can get less than 10 signatures, and there aren't going to be any situation where anybody's asked to get more than 50 signatures. So it's a very low threshold, very, a very straightforward process in, in the number of signatures to, to allow for folks to get their names on the ballot. Iowa is one of the easiest states that are out there. So you don't have any filing fees. You don't have monstrous numbers of signatures that make it unattainable for you. So again, making sure you understand how many signatures do you need and the area from which you can collect them. The number of signatures always, always, always is good practice to get more additional signatures than that. You're looking at candidate, folks that can, that can sign your papers need to be an eligible elector of the school district. So if I happen to be in town visiting my sibling or, and you happen to come to the door and get signatures, and I signed your papers, but I don't reside in that school district, I'm not an eligible elector there, that signature's not going to count towards your, your, towards your overall total. But if you aren't aware of that, when you turn it in and you count that towards your minimum threshold, there is a process for people to be able to come in and object to those signatures, saying, this isn't an eligible elector, it shouldn't count towards the total. So if, if that happens and my name gets removed from the list, you want to make sure you have enough signatures to make up for that so that you don't fall below that threshold and then end up with your name not being on, on there. Because that process will happen after the filing deadline. And so, so there's not a way to go and fix it or remedy it anymore at that point. So you don't want to be caught in that boat. Making sure you have those signatures, eligible signatures. I highly encourage everybody to use the nomination petition that's available through the Secretary of State's Office. You're not required to use that document or that template, but it is set up to make sure that you've got all of the required elements in the header at the time that you're collecting the signatures. If the header information is incomplete at the time that you collect your signatures, those signatures won't be able to be counted. Which also a big thing that you see is if you happen to be at an event where you're passing around your, your document, if somebody, when they get to the bottom of that page, their natural instinct is to turn over and just keep signing on the back. Because that header information isn't present at the top of the page on the back of the sheet, those signatures wouldn't count towards your total as well. So if you want to, if you double side that and have the header on both sides, you could do that. Otherwise, just be very aware that to tell people, hey, don't sign on the back, we'll get you a new form, or know that you just don't want to count those towards your total before you turn that into the school board secretary. We already talked about the filing deadline. That is a hard and fast deadline. So you want to make sure that you're, you're in by that 5:00 PM on that date. Things that come in, the school board secretary, even if they're still there at 5:30, can't get you in under the, under the wire there. It is a hard and fast deadline there. Again, aim for early in the, in the filing period to avoid any issues. Should there be an issue with one of the pages of your signatures, you've got time to correct that. The one, another big question that comes up, a little less in school districts than it does for primary elections or city, city primary elections, is if a person is 17 years old today, they are eligible to register to vote. If they're going to turn 18 by election day, people ask, can they sign my petition? And I will be flat, I'll be very truthful with you, that the law isn't very clear on that. What I always tell folks when they call me, that they're looking to run and they say, the 17-year-old wants to sign my petition. They're going to be 18 by election day, so they're eligible to vote for me on election day. I always encourage them not to count that signature towards their total. I can't say for certain that the law wouldn't count that towards it, but it, it gets outside of the hands of the school board secretary, county auditor's office, even the secretary of state's office. We don't have an overall say in that. The objection panel would hear any argument saying this person wasn't eligible at the time they signed it. And if that should drop you under the threshold, the only remedy at that point is district court. And anybody that is actively looking to have their name on their ballot wants to avoid that for themselves because they might not be able to be on the ballot should the court decide that signature doesn't count. And so if it's me running for the ballot, if it's my best friend wanting to run for office and they ask me that question, I say, yes, certainly go ahead and let that person sign for you, but make sure you've got enough signatures to, to make up for that, should it be discounted. I'm not aware of anybody that's likely listening to this webinar or even the recording of it that says, you know what, I want to be a test case and go to district court and find out what the judge has to say about that. So I'm going to aim to get an objection there. Someday, somebody might want, want to do that and be that test case, but I'm guessing it's none of you. So make sure that you, you're, you're looking at that. And the last thing I'll say about that is there is a candidate's guide for school board candidates on the Secretary of State's website that covers a lot of those items, talks about name conventions. For example, if I am a doctor, I'm not allowed to use that title on the ballot and such. So there's a lot of little things that can be out there, but that guide does a really good job of kind of putting those in one stop shop for you. If you haven't seen that, Secretary of State's website, sos.ivoa.gov. Candidate section can be very helpful to you.
Thank you so much, Wes. And Emily, I appreciate you putting the link to the guide from the Secretary of State's website in the chat. So appreciate that. And Wes, a question did come in when you were discussing this. If someone accidentally signed my petition and they're out of district, can I simply cross their name out?
Yes, you can. You, you can certainly just take a, a single line. You don't need to try to scribble it out so nobody can see what it is or anything like that. Just a simple line through that certainly lends itself to that. There's actually some statutes in the law that account just for that, saying that if there's a line through it, it's not counted toward, towards that. So that's perfectly acceptable. It doesn't wreck the whole page by any means.
Thank you so much. All right. So with that good information, I think we're going to launch our next quick poll here just to get an idea of where folks are at in the filing process. Emily, if you could go ahead and launch that poll and just give us a little feedback. Where are you at with this filing process so far? Some folks may haven't, maybe haven't started yet. Others maybe already turned in their paperwork because I think the filing period did open August 28th. So let's go ahead and see where people are at with that.
I'm just going to give it another five seconds or so. We've got some, a lot of answers here. So I'll go ahead and end and share out.
Thank you so much, Emily. It looks like there's a pretty strong mix of folks that are, are early birds. Look at you guys, so organized and have already turned in your paperwork. And folks that are collecting signatures now, and still some that are just curious about the process. So thank you very much for that feedback and thanks, Emily, for the poll. All right, so we're going to keep going and start digging into some conflict of interest laws. Um, so board members as elected officials are duty-bound to serve the public interest. And as private citizens, you may also participate in outside employment and activities. And school board members have to comply with conflict of interest laws that kind of measure or balance sometimes that, that tension that could be present. So Zach, can you share some information on Iowa's conflict of interest laws?
Yeah. So the information you're all seeing on the slide right now, our office is only responsible for enforcing the provisions in Iowa Code Chapter 68B. You can see there are some other conflict of interest provisions that are more specific for school board members. Ours are just for all government officials in the state of Iowa. And really, the main thing I want you to remember here is these laws are designed to prevent you being personally getting enriched because of your position in public service. That's what they're designed for. Hopefully they come across as pretty common sense. The three major conflict of interest laws you'd have to worry about once you're in office are if you're taking any official action or performing a, a vote or something on the school board that impacts your outside employment, you need to disclose that, you need to refrain from voting to make sure that you aren't, again, voting to potentially expend public dollars to award a contract to the company you work for, who might then in turn give you a bonus. Again, pretty common sense. Hopefully that comes across as something that went past the headline test. You certainly wouldn't want that coming on, on the front page of the newspaper, saying that you've done that. Another one, receiving gifts from people who stand to gain from your official actions on the school board. We do have a gift limit in the code, which is anything over $3 from a restricted donor is not okay. So a restricted donor can give you something worth less than $3, but I'm not sure what that would be aside from a stick of gum, probably not even a cup of coffee. That law hasn't been updated since 1993. So in 2023, there really aren't too many things that are excluded with that exception. And the third main kind is expanding or permitting the expenditure of public monies for your campaign. So if you're already on the school board and you're running for reelection, you shouldn't be using the district's copier paper or computer or really any of the publicly provided materials to enrich your campaign. Again, hopefully that's pretty obvious. And all of these prohibitions that we have in our ethics laws apply not only to you, but to your family members. So if some big food service provider is looking to get the contract for your school district, they can't circumvent these laws by giving your spouse a nice $10,000 thank you check because that's not directly to you. Obviously, the legislature anticipated that and so made these laws apply not only for your own personal conflict of interest, but any you might have in your immediate family as well.
Zach, thanks so much for that. We have a question that came in, and I'll tell you in advance, Zach, that it might be kind of a combo of 68B, so within your category. It might be a little bit more Chapter 279 Board of Directors because we at IASB do field this from time to time. But what if you have someone who's interested in running for the board, but their spouse is a teacher in the district? Is that a conflict of interest?
Well, yes and no. So yes, it is a conflict because, you know, you might eventually be in a position where you are voting on, say, your spouse's contract to be renewed or something like that. As a candidate, it's not a conflict. But once you're in office, it is certainly something you want to be aware of so that you aren't being seen as doing anything that would, again, potentially enrich yourself or your family members because you just happen to be on the school board. But I think that kind of a situation, and Siobhan, you might want to chime in, it really isn't that uncommon, especially in some of the smaller communities. And so there are definitely ways where you can live with that, still serve on the school board and have a family member who is a teacher. Again, we usually say that the best remedy is just disclose it, refrain from voting on any contract. And if you put it out in the open and you're the one calling it out and saying, just FYI, I have a conflict here, people will recognize that. But if you don't, then someone will probably find out and then it'll look like you've been trying to hide something.
That's great. Thank you, Zach. And that's really consistent with what we tend to talk about with our board members is when they call and they ask us questions, if they have a spouse or family member that works in the district, that there are good ways and avenues when you serve on the board to be able to request that a particular contract be pull up, be pulled out or set aside from the rest of the contracts for approval so that the board member can still, can still represent their constituents and, and vote on the majority of contracts, but then they would abstain from the one that they might have a conflict with. So there are good avenues to be able to do that. And IASB is always happy to serve as a resource for our members when they have questions about that.
One last point I make real quick is, you know, I already mentioned about how our laws are designed to prevent people from getting all these benefits just because they serve in a public capacity. But by that same token, we don't want anyone to be punished because they serve in a public capacity. We want a completely even playing field. So yeah, we absolutely don't want someone's, uh, family members to be punished just because they happen to have someone who volunteered to run for the school board. So we just want even playing field. No one's being hurt or helped by their position here.
Yeah, thanks. And then one other question, and again, this might be sort of in between both of us, Zach, but this one came in that their spouse is an attorney and one of their clients supplies school lunch food. Would the board member have to abstain from voting for that contract?
I would say yes. And usually, what I tell people a lot of times, it's the cliche attorney answer, it depends. But what I usually encourage people to do is the best practice because a lot of times, even if the law doesn't explicitly forbid it, even though I think it might in this situation, a lot of times you just want to, again, avoid even the appearance of any impropriety for your own sake, for our sake, so we don't have any complaints coming against you that we have to investigate. And I think that would be a situation where it would raise enough eyebrows that you would want to be very cautious and just approach it with the maximum amount of transparency as possible.
Yeah, thanks, Zach. And we talked about that here with IASB too of there, you know, there may be an actual conflict of interest and there may be just a perceived conflict of interest for your community. And there are, there are advantages to, even with just a perceived conflict of interest, to decide to abstain for that very reason, just to make sure that your community knows and understands that you are serving, that you're fulfilling your fiduciary duty to the district. One other question came in, and this one's actually for Wes from when you were talking about districts, school district boundaries and director districts. There was a question that someone wanted to clarify. When you are obtaining signatures for your paperwork and the school district uses director districts, do you, can you only get signatures from the director district where you, where you would be serving as a board member? Or can you get them from the entire school district?
Right. That's a, that's a great question, and it actually depends because they, the school can be set up both ways. So there, there is a one option for you to have residential requirements for your candidate, saying, I have to reside in District 2. But the entire school district votes on each of the districts, so they're still elected at large. I just have a residency requirement. And, but they can also be set up that I have a residency requirement, not only as a candidate, but as the voter. So I'm only allowed to vote on District 2. I don't get to vote on District 3, 4, or 5. So it can be set up either, either way. And so understanding the representation plan for your school is very important. And for those of you that are already on the school board, you know, that we just went through redistricting as well. So that representation plan could have changed since the last election. So wanting to make sure that you understand that is, is very important on who's allowed to sign your, your papers. The easy way to kind of think about it is the person has to be allowed to vote for me if they, when they go on election day. Am I going to be on their ballot or not? And that, so that's the question that you, that you kind of want to ask.
That's great. Thank you so much, Wes. All right, let's keep moving along. And for everybody that's listening in live, you guys are doing a great job of asking really good questions. So don't be shy. We're going to, we're going to get to as many as we can fit into this hour. So we're going to talk a little bit about some considerations for candidates. Candidates may want to consider legal, ethical, and financial aspects for their campaigns. So I'm going to send it over to you, Zach. So school board candidates have to comply with the Iowa Ethics Campaign Finance Disclosure Laws, Chapter 68A and 68B. There are many provisions in the law, but Zach is going to highlight some, three of the must-know laws that you should really be aware of.
Right. And this will not be the only time I say this, but we do not expect you guys to become complete experts in Iowa Code Chapter 68A. You're already busy with your own lives and you're running for office on top of that. We want to be a resource for you. But some of the most important points that you need to know is if you raise or spend more than $1,000, then you have a requirement to file with our office and form a campaign committee. I might just call it a committee. And that committee is similar to like a business entity that you would file if you were setting up an LLC with the Secretary of State. You'll give us your name, contact information, you'll choose your committee name, which, believe it or not, has to have your name in it. It can't just be your initials or some ambiguous title. It needs to be, you know, Zach Goodrich for Dallas Center Grimes School Board or something like that. And the law only requires that, again, if you raise or spend more than $1,000, that's the threshold. But we do see a lot of committees who register, even if they fall below that $1,000, just because they want to be as transparent as possible. They want to be in regular communication with. Just because they want to be as transparent as possible. They want to be in regular communication with our office to make sure. That they're doing everything right. Uh, and maybe the biggest reason leads into the second bullet point there, which is. You can only use what we call a short form attribution statement if you have a committee name registered with our office. So what that means basically is if you are spending just a couple hundred bucks, you don't want to file with us, that's fine. But because you have not filed with us, your attribution statement on the campaign sign you put out. Can't just be paid for by, uh, Zach for school board. You can't do that because no committee is registered with our office with that name. You would have to put paid for by Zach Goodrich and your personal address as well. And the law does this because if our office does anything when it comes to campaign finance, it's follow the money. If you remember that old movie, All the President's Men about the Watergate scandal, which Watergate was at its core, a campaign finance scandal. When President Nixon's campaign paid those people to break into his political opponent's headquarters, we need to do the same thing. And so you need to have paid for by on all your campaign materials. When in doubt, put it on there. The law might not always require it, but a lot of people again will expect it on there. And it's just. Uh, nice to, I think, go above and beyond. So people have maximum transparency and disclosure. We do have a form, uh, if you want to use a short form attribution statement. You don't want to put your address on there, but you also are not going to file with, uh, with us, your committee. Um, and so again, just be in touch with our office. We'll help walk you through that and make sure that we're getting you the right kind of solution for your kind of campaign. Campaign signs, you can't put them in front of certain businesses. You can't put them in public property. Don't try to, uh, be overly ambitious and stick your campaign signs in every single home up and down the block. We have had candidates who do that. At the very least, make sure you get permission from the property owner to put the sign there. But stick to residential areas. Some businesses can, but the line is very muddy and it usually gets complicated. And our office has to get involved to determine whether or not a business can have a sign in front. Um, and so, uh, just check with our office if you have any questions about that. But those are the big three things. Uh, if you're spending or raising, have any kind of financial activity more than a thousand dollars. You need to file a statement of organization with us to establish your campaign committee. On all your campaign materials, put paid for by and your committee name on there. So people know who is paying for those materials. Um, and be careful where you place your campaign signs and don't stick them in every house without asking the, uh, homeowner. You wouldn't do that with plastic flamingos, so don't do that with your campaign signs.
That is, um, some, those are some very wise tips. Thank you, Zach. Um, one thing that I. Sometimes we hear, um, people ask about our social media attributes or, um, attributions. Zach, um, any thoughts on those?
Yeah. So this is one of the areas, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the laws that our office enforces haven't been updated since frankly, before I was born. Um, and, uh, I'll keep my personal opinions to myself there. But we have still taken steps to modernize and apply the laws, um, to more modern situations where you, uh, might run into in twenty twenty-three. Whether or not you can use Venmo to accept campaign contributions, social media attribution statements. There is no law written in nineteen ninety-three that says your Facebook post needs to have a paid for by on it. But we have interpreted the law to mean that it does apply to those situations because it's very comparable. To like a campaign sign or bulletin board posting like you might do in the days before social media. So again, when in doubt, if it's a Facebook post, if you're sending out a mass text message or email. Put paid for by on there. If your campaign is the one who is responsible for it. That way it doesn't appear to be some mysterious communication and people don't know who's actually paying for it.
Great advice. Thank you so much. All right. Now, we always have to cover this, Zach. Um, what's the downside if you don't comply?
Well, if you don't comply with any of the laws, there are going to be penalties. Uh, there are going to be penalties if you don't file your campaign reports on time. We will send out email reminders once you're registered with our office, uh, for your committee to file campaign reports. We will put it on our Twitter, on our website. We will do everything we can to make sure that you are aware of the deadline. But at the end of the day, it is the candidate's responsibility, uh, to meet those deadlines. That's why I usually encourage candidates to have a separate treasurer. You can be your own campaign treasurer if you want to. But you're going to be wanting to be knocking doors and, uh, talking with the voters and it's best to leave all the financials. To other people, in my opinion. Um, and if we find that you have campaign signs in front of like a bank, which is not okay, or a corporation. We'll have to have those signs removed and then we usually do a case-by-case basis evaluation to determine whether or not there would be more penalties. But at the end of the day, I don't think anyone wants a headline saying that the ethics board is investigating or taking action against so-and-so running for school board. That's not really some good press. Uh, and so we will, uh, take action if the law has been violated. But we don't want to be a gotcha kind of agency. We want to help you comply. Our main goal is compliance. But at the same time, we also need to enforce the law. So that's why when in doubt, contact our office. We will do everything we can to get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. We want to help you. We want to help you understand because again, we know you're not going to be an expert in all the minutia of Iowa Code, Chapter sixty-eight A.
Great. Thank you so much. And we had another question that came in, um, for social media posts. Do regular posts require a paid for by or just ads that you pay for?
Well. It depends on the social media site. I know on Facebook, usually what we see, which is compliant with the law, is if you click on a campaigns page. It'll say, okay, Zach Goodrich for school board, paid for by Zach Goodrich for school board. Uh, and if it's on that page, then that's fine. The ads certainly need to have it on every single one, but if you're just doing a basic post. That isn't costing you anything more and you have the paid for by on your main profile, then that's okay. Um, and I think that's true for most social media platforms. I don't use all of them, so I can't speak intelligently about each one. But, uh, if it's easily accessible somewhere and if it's not a post that you're paying to post, then you will be fine. But if it's a paid ad, then absolutely put it on there.
Great. Good advice. Thanks so much. All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about, um, a scenario we're going to go through and then some cautionary tales. So I'll go ahead and kind of set the scene and then in a moment here, I will, um. Ask Emily to, um. To go ahead and launch the poll and then afterwards we'll kind of, um, debrief it a little bit with Zach and Wes weighing in. So, um, here we go. I'm talking about our scenario. A citizen in your district is also running for an open seat on the same board. They ask you to run as a block or a group to share brochures and signs and to campaign together at events. Emily, can you go ahead and launch that poll so we can get some responses? And then, yep, the responses, um, possible responses, what would you do? Yes, you'd run as a candidate block, um, or no, thanks. You'd prefer to run on your own. So go ahead and answer now. Just give it a little bit more time for people to weigh in here. Okay, I think that's good. I'm going to go ahead and share those results. Great. Thanks so much. All right. It looks like most of you say you'd rather run on your own, but yep, there are some, some folks that are, are. Would be willing to try, um, running as a candidate block. So let's talk about this just a little bit. Oops. This is what happens when, you know, you get a little, a little too fast forward. So, um, we like to kind of, um. Think about things through the analysis of, um, is it legal versus is it wise? So, um, let me turn it over to Zach and Wes to see if you guys have thoughts about running as, um, a campaign block. Do you guys have any thoughts or particular things you wanted to weigh in on here? And if you don't, that's okay, because I can.
Is probably going to have a little bit more.
Yep.
Yeah, I feel like Zach might have a, have a little bit more up there in, in terms of, in terms of. From Secretary of State and, and at the ballot access side of things. There really isn't anything involved there. I would just like to, just want to make super clear that school board is a nonpartisan office. Um, as our city councils. Um, and so as we're getting a little bit here, the last couple of cycles. It's been a little bit where I've had some personal experience with the folks that are running for, uh, for cities, saying I'm, I'm the member of such and such party. That's running for city council and my response was, well, that's interesting because it's a nonpartisan office. So that doesn't really register. And makes sense either. Um, but in terms of that, there isn't any, any places on paperwork saying a part of this block. Or anything to get that shown on a ballot would be the biggest thing. If we're running as the ABC block of such and such school district. There isn't going to be any reference to that on the ballot and there's no way to get that reference on the ballot either.
Thanks, Wes.
And I'm going to use that as the jumping off point because when you register with our office, your candidate committee. It is a candidate committee singular. You can't register as the ABC block and then list three different candidates' names. It is individual. Um, and it's just going to be a lot easier if you don't run as a block. Uh, I know what I saw a couple of years ago, uh, in my own community was, uh, they had all their separate campaign operations, their own brochures, their own everything else. And then they did publicly endorse one another, which is fine. But if you're sharing, if you want to share expenses, if you want to do any of that. That's where we're going to run into the problems because as you can see on the slide, candidates cannot give money to other candidate committees. You just can't. That is not allowed whatsoever. You can hold, uh, fundraisers together. But we need to be very clear when we follow the money, who is paying for what? Is it an equal shared, equally shared cost? Um, and it all needs to be reported as well. You know, similar to, uh, your general campaign committee. Requirements like reporting all contributions, the name and mailing address of the contributor that is over twenty-five dollars. You would have to split up the costs this way. Um, and then we're going to get into, uh, okay. If this person's paying for half of the brochure that two candidates are on, how are we going to report that? It is just going to be a lot easier if you don't do it. Uh, again, there are some informal ways where you can. Run as a block for lack of a better term, but as far as our office is concerned and as far as the campaign laws are concerned. You are running as a singular candidate, uh, which makes perfect sense why you're going to show up as a singular candidate. On the ballot as well. It's the exact same for the campaign laws. Um, so there are ways, be very careful with this. It's easier to go at it on your own, but if you want to, uh. Work with someone else and if you are getting into the financial side of things, where there are going to be costs. Or money raised, then you'll want to contact our office just to make sure you're doing everything correctly.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate the insight. And you know, from our perspective with, um, I A S B, we tend to. We tend to split these questions up of, is it legal? Is it wise? Because they're both really valid because something could be, could be legal to do. Um, is it the wise choice for you? The right choice for you as a, as a board member and, um, some of the considerations that we've listed here, um, on the slide are, are good ones for you to. To really think through. Um, you know, not the least of which is, um, are you sending a particular message, um, to your constituents? In terms of, um. What happens if, um, someone from your block doesn't win, um, but you do? Or also, um, does it, does it presume that your, um, all of your views or opinions on a particular issue are going to align? When maybe they will and maybe they won't. Um, so just some things to consider, um, on the wisdom side of things. Because you just want to be very thoughtful and intentional, um, before you decide to engage in anything like that. We're going to go to cautionary tales next, but I have a couple of questions that have come in that I want to make sure that we get to. Um, and I also, while I'm pitching these questions, um. Zach's office was kind enough, um, to share, um. Um, an outline with us. And so Emily, if you wouldn't mind putting that in the chat, we can link to it and it's available, um, after the webinar. When the recording's up on the website as well. Um, we got that great resource and the school candidates guide from Wes. And we want to share another great resource from Zach's office. Um, so with that being said, I'm going to, um, ask a couple of these questions here. Zach, I think this first one's probably for you. Um, do you have to create a separate page for your campaign? On social media as opposed to announcing on your private Facebook page?
No, uh, you can put all campaign posts on your personal Facebook page. I would encourage you to still create a dedicated campaign page, um, for a few different reasons. One, if you are going to just be using your personal Facebook page. Then it might be a little bit hard to remember to put the paid for by on there if you're posting about. Oh, look at this cute picture of my new puppy and then also vote for me. Uh, it might be a little bit hard to, uh, keep everything straight. So it'd be easier just to set up a dedicated one. But if you do post on your personal one, uh, and you're posting things that are explicitly campaign material. Make sure you have the paid for by somewhere on it.
Thank you so much. And then I have one more. Can you self-nominate on your, um, on your paperwork? That one I think is for you, Wes. Can you, can you sign your own name?
Sure. Yes. Uh, you, you certainly can sign for yourself as long as you are eligible elector, which you would need to be in order to be. Eligible to hold the seat. Uh, you can certainly sign for yourself. Uh, and you'd be surprised how many people don't. Do that. Uh, don't, uh, so, uh, some people like their name to be first on the list. Other people, uh. Like to come at it from kind of maybe, maybe a little bit more of a humble space and choose not to do that, but you certainly can and that would count towards your total.
Great. Thank you guys so much. So I think next we're going to tackle some cautionary tales. Wes and Zach are going to share a couple of, uh, cautionary tales from some real life examples that, um, that they've. Uh, heard about and that you guys can learn from. So, um, Wes, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. So, uh, you heard me talk about it a little bit earlier, the collecting more signatures than you need. Um, I can, I can tell you it would take more than, more than the fingers I have to know people that. Didn't get to be on the ballot because they had an issue with one of the pages of their petitions. So if I'm collecting, uh, fifty signatures, I, I need, I need fifty signatures to be on a school board. And I've got twenty of them on one page and there was something wrong with my header information that I didn't get the election date put in there. Uh, that is a requirement of law. And so therefore those twenty signatures, they come off. Now I'm down to thirty-two signatures and my name's not going to go on the ballot. Um, and like I said, that objection process. Happens after the filing, filing deadline. So once, once they come off again, there's no way to supplement that anymore. So. Um, I can tell you this, people do get caught in this situation. Um, and it's not just, it's not just local folks that get caught in this situation. We've had some pretty big, uh, pretty big campaigns. In the relatively recent past that somebody intended to be on the ballot and, uh, after the objections were through, surprised they weren't there anymore.
Thank you very much, Wes. Zach?
Yeah. So for these two cautionary tales, just remember that there are two separate arenas here. There is going to be the political arena. Where you are campaigning and running for office. And then there is the government or public service arena, whatever you want to call it. When you are officially in office and that includes people who work for the school district. So you don't want to send campaign emails to school emails because then you're crossing the line between politics. And the side of government that should be, uh, politically clear and, you know, not involved in all that mess. Uh, and the same goes for actual mailboxes. Uh, the example I use, she's the most conspicuous, so I'll pick on her. Uh, if Governor Reynolds were to send an email to all state employees saying, make sure you get out and vote for me. I want another term as your governor. Well, that clearly would be, uh, her using her position in government to benefit her political position as a candidate. And it would not be okay regardless if you're for her or against her. And the same is true for school board, whether you're a candidate or on the board. Don't send it to the teachers' school email addresses. Those are for school business, not for your campaign business.
That's great. Thank you so much. So we had a couple of additional questions come in. I think these are Zach questions. First one is, um, on the, uh, paid for by. Is that only necessary if you've spent a thousand dollars or more, um, and needed to set up a candidate committee?
No, the paid for by is required on all campaign materials, um, regardless of if you have formed a committee. Forming the committee just allows you to use the short form attribution, which is just the committee name. Uh, and the logic there is if you've registered with our office and we need to get in touch with you. We know that the Zach Goodrich for School Board Committee, uh, the candidate is Zach, his phone number is eight six seven five three oh nine. And we can get in touch with him. But if you haven't registered with us, that's when you need to put the personal address, your phone number on there. So yeah, that requirement is, is a requirement, um, whether you have crossed that thousand dollar threshold or not.
Thank you. And then also, what about collecting signatures at the school if you're a current board member?
I would not do that. Uh, again, that's where we have the campaign activities, then we have the school activities. Uh, try not to muddy those waters if at all possible. Um, we do have an advisory opinion out there that states that it is technically permissible under the law to go to public places and collect, but only if it's open to everyone. So if you're going to the community center, well, anyone could, in theory, walk into the community center and ask people who are there for signatures. Uh, if it's at the school and especially if it's during working hours, that would start to raise some eyebrows around our office. Um, so I think it would be best to avoid it. Uh, again, it might have the appearance that you're using your position um to benefit your campaign. Um, if you're working at the School Board Office during the day and the other candidates aren't, uh, that would not look too good, and it certainly doesn't send the message that there is an even playing field. So I would avoid it. Um, but if you're at like a a football game, for instance, well, any community member could be uh there at the football game asking for petition signatures. So that would be open for everyone. Uh, it's all about having an even playing field.
Great, thank you. And then one more question came in for you, Zach. Um, what about a situation where um if a group pays for ads for a couple of School Board um candidates but doesn't indicate um who paid for the ads? Is that acceptable?
Well, I hate to say it because again, it's the cliche attorney answer, but it depends. It depends on the content of the ad. It depends on the kind of group paying for it. Um, the campaign laws are far from easy to understand. That's why I have a job and we have uh seven people at our agency who are here to help with that. Um, so it really does depend. In some situations, it might be okay, but in other situations, it might not be.
Great, thank you so much um to both of you. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, it it's is it okay, Shabat? I'd I would like to go back to the the last question there just to put one more point of emphasis on the collection of signatures at the school in particular. There is some very clear election law um about you as a candidate collecting signatures while you would be working in a position. So if I I work at the school district, while my hours while I'm working, if I were to collect signatures um while I'm doing that work, um, that is expressly prohibited. That's actually that's it's a felony of sorts um under election laws too. So especially if you are a an employee of the school, be very cognizant that you're uh off of your duties while you're doing your campaign items uh for signature collections.
That is, I'm really glad that you at that you chimed in right there. Thank you, Wes. I appreciate it. Um, I had one more question that came in. Um, what if a candidate is a former employee of the district? Um, can they get signatures from their former coworkers?
So yeah, so yes, in terms of the signatures, that the requirements of who's allowed to sign for you is just that they're an eligible elector um for you. So if somebody's not, uh, they don't even actually have to be registered to vote. In Iowa, we've got high, high participation in registration. Uh, so it's not a lot of folks walking around that aren't registered that would be willing to sign your petition probably. But if I just moved to town and I haven't registered yet, as long as I'm eligible to be registered to vote, I'm an eligible elector and I can sign for you. Uh, so there are prohibitions on just because you're my relative or uh you're my employer or you're my employee. Now, there are going to be issues if you say, because you're my employee, you need to sign my papers. That gets into some some other areas um uh that's uh are gonna be prohibited. But uh, there are prohibitions because you worked with somebody previously.
All right, thank you guys so very much. I really appreciate it. Um, your insights are always greatly valued. Um, so for additional resources on um conducting legal and ethical campaigns, check out these um links. We have IASB's um Get On Board Campaign um through our website. And then um Zach's office um and Wes's office are also amazing resources. If you guys have questions, don't be shy about reaching out to them. Uh, links to their respective websites are available here. And also you guys can call their offices um and ask questions. And then I need to tell you about a couple of things. We have a couple more candidate uh webinars coming to you guys before too long, um, just to give you some additional resources in your process for um considering board service. So we'll be talking about um about a couple of different topics, um, some board learning and um how boards make a difference and um some effective relationships um on the um on the on the board team. And then also, mark your calendars. Be aware, because it comes right after the election, um, that IASB's annual convention and trade so trade show occurs um November fifteenth through the seventeenth. We would love to see you guys there. Um, so I know it happens right after the election, but oh my gosh, it's a one-stop shop for a ton of board learning and understanding your um everything from your legal to your fiscal to your governance responsibilities um for board service. And then we also have um some onboard um some new board member onboarding um opportu learning opportunities as well. So um, again, thank you so very much to Wes and Zach. Um, you guys were just fantastic, and um we really appreciate you uh taking the time to share some thoughts with us. If you guys have additional questions for them, please feel free to reach out to their offices. And um, thank you so very much for joining us today.